No mai haire mai, ki tangata o paikawakawa, kitiko papa iti neira. Welcome to the people of the Southern Ward, to this hui, about the annual plan and the parking policy. My name is Esther Bookhold of Soulstone and I will be your host and your emcee this evening. First of all, to get us started, and as is the co-papa, the custom of Wellington City Council meetings, we will begin with a karakia, a beautiful karakia which speaks of drawing in the natural elements to help support this hui tonight. [Kakatakehau kitu uru, kakatakehau kitu tonga, kia mā kina kina ki uta, kia mā tara tara ki tai, e hi ake ana te atukura, e tio, e huka, e heihu, ti hei maori ora.] Thank you. So just to begin, I'd like to do a little bit of housekeeping with you. We're not on a physical venue, but some of you may not be so familiar with our online webinars. And you'll see on your right hand side there, the dialogue box that's for you to use and enjoy and to help you set up this screen as you would like it. So have a play with the buttons and you can decide how you see us as the speakers. We have nearly 100 of you registered tonight, so we have you on mute and can't see all your screens, but you can communicate to us via the questions box. We have received some questions from you and you can continue to post those live. We'll be picking them up as we can. You also have four handouts. There's a dropdown tab. There are four handouts, including a version of this PowerPoint, an easy to read version, accessible version, and information about the parking policy and about the annual plan. So take a look at those and enjoy those. And they will also be sent out to you afterwards or available in the Let's Talk website. This webinar is being recorded, so for those of you who couldn't wait, make it tonight, we'll send you that, we'll send out that link to everybody and please share it in your community and share it with your friends. Thank you, Olivia. So our agenda tonight is that I am introducing and setting you up for what's coming. Andy Foster, your mayor, will be giving you an overview of the annual plan and fielding some questions. And councillor Jenny Conde will be speaking on the parking policy. This will be followed by a panel with both Andy, Jenny, and your two local councillors, Fleur Fitzsimons and Laurie Foo, who will be fielding questions. There are many questions that have been posted and that we expect to receive. We will answer as many of those as we can. Anything that we don't get to will be recorded, coordinated, and answered and posted on the Let's Talk website. Next slide, please. So if I could, welcome in our panel tonight so that you can introduce yourselves. Welcome, everybody. And Laurie's still coming in, but let's start with Andy. Would you like to introduce yourself?
I am muted. Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Andy Foster. I have the privilege of being your mayor. I live in Karori and I've been spending an inordinate amount of time with this car sitting behind me in Zoom meetings throughout the last about eight weeks or so. So looking forward to tonight and welcome, everyone.
Welcome. Thank you, Andy. Jenny?
Kia ora, everyone. I'm Jenny Conde. I've got the parking portfolio and I'm here this evening to present on the parking policy review. And I was very excited to have two small children go back to school today. They had a wonderful time.
Fleur?
No, kia ora tato. My name is Fleur Fitzsimons and I'm a city councillor based here in Island Bay. And yeah, I'm really looking forward to tonight and hearing what questions we're going to have for us.
Lovely. And finally, but not least, Laurie. You're on mute, Laurie. It happens.
Okay. Kia ora tato, Laurie Foo, noho, coming from the sunny flats of Berenpor. Yes, I've been spending a lot of time in this room, but have certainly been enjoying getting out and about over the weekend, doing a bit of local shopping.
Good on you.
And I'm a portfolio holder for Waste Free Wellington.
Lovely. Great to have you all here tonight. And if we could, if you could share the screen again for us, Olivia? So behind this webinar, as well as the panel, we also have Olivia on tech, Diane, who's going to be fielding your questions, and Amy, who's going to be fielding. She'll be writing some written answers as she can to questions as they come in. So that's a little bit about us and about tonight. When you registered, you also answered some questions and we heard from you that 73% of you live in Paikawakawa, 26 in Wellington City, and some of you even outside Wellington City. Great to have you all here. These webinars will also be posted, so as well as those of you who are watching tonight, welcome to those of you who've come on later. You also asked us some questions which we will be endeavouring to answer, both in the presentations and in the answer time. And here's a few of the key questions you had for us already. Very concerned about the rates increases, what was up, what was down, how do we pay now and into the future? Water and library infrastructure, how that's being paid for and how it will be prioritised? And how the annual plan connects with all the other key plans and projects that Wellington City Council has on the go. You also had questions about the parking policy, in particular, how we're striking the balance or how councillors planning to strike the balance between cars, cycling, and people, as well as the cost and availability of parking. You also had questions about your local community. Particularly, these topics, the sewage and the water network, upgrades, seawalls, cycleways, the community consultation process, and landfill and waste. So we'll be bringing those out as they come. Thank you, Olivia. So just before we launch into Andy's presentation, we'll say, thank you, Jenny, Fleur, and Laurie. We'll see you back again soon. But we're going to launch a quick poll so that, in giving his presentation, Andy understands what it is you already know. Could you bring up that poll? Yeah. So did you get a chance to look at the Wellington City Council annual plan online? Just choose the answer that makes most sense to you so that Andy can get a sense of how how well you know it at this stage. So are those answers starting to come through?
Yep, we've had a great, great number of people vote in that one already. So I'm just going to close the poll now and share the results.
Oh, very good, very good. So about 60, 70 people, percentage of listeners, viewers, Andy, have already had a look. That's fantastic. Great. So if we could bring back the slide deck, Olivia? And in your capable hands, Fleur, I'll just get you to, Fleur and Laurie, if you could just take your cameras off. Lovely. Thank you. And thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Esther. Look, thank you, everyone, and welcome again. It's an interesting way of presenting our annual plan, but it seems we've got a lot of people who want to participate and it's great. So thank you very much for coming and spending some time with us this evening. Can we go to the next slide, please? Right. Well, I'm going to start off with, it's about a 10-minute presentation. I might make sure that I try and keep to the time that I've been allotted. And the first bit is just to talk about the COVID environment because obviously this is all about COVID. We were about to go out to consult on a conventional annual plan. COVID arrived and we had to sort of stop, start again, and change the annual plan or the draft annual plan fairly significantly. What this slide says is the full impact will not be known yet for some time. For many of us, our jobs haven't been particularly affected by it, apart from obviously having to work from home. But we haven't had a curtailment in our income, other than those of us who have chosen to do something with that. But for many people, many businesses, they have had a significant impact and are expecting a significant impact. We don't know how big that impact is going to be, but we know it is going to be considerable. We've probably all seen a range of different economic forecasts, but you know, it's anything up to sort of 10% unemployment and about that much in terms of adverse effect on GDP over a period of time. So the effects are likely to be significant and across all aspects of city life. We are concerned that, for example, there will not be as many businesses able to operate and survive in our central city and in some of our suburban centres. It's obviously also affecting our cultural life, the ability to hold events. We can't do that at the moment. And obviously also our sporting and recreational life as well. We can move on to the next one, please, Olivia. And Wellington City Council also runs a business as well, and that is, we are being significantly adversely affected by COVID. So we think that we will lose something in the realm of about $20 million in the year that we're already in. That's the 2019-20 year. So it's between March, late March, and the end of June. And we're expecting anything up to another $50 million in either lost revenue or opportunity costs to lost revenue. So up to about $70 million effect on council. We are at the stage proposing, the stage we are proposing to debt fund that. So instead of putting that on the rates today, we're intending to spread that over a period of probably about 10 years. And I really need to highlight also that we already have significant cost pressures on us. So we approved a long-term plan in 2018, so that was 2018 through to 2028. And that plan included 7.1% increase in rates this year, and then 6.8 the following year, 6.2 the following year after that, and then another 7%. So effectively close to 28% in rates over a period of the next four years. And that excluded investment in several key areas. So it excluded investment in Let's Get Wellington Moving, so our transport area. It excluded investment, extra investment in the three waters, water, sewage, and stormwater. It excluded the three new temporary libraries which are going to be up and running in central cities. So two of them are already there, one to come fairly shortly. And it excluded investment in Tanaka Civic Square and the library. And also obviously excluded investment to deal with the effects of COVID. So all of those things were in a sense added on top of that four years of 7%. Can we go to the next one, please, Olivia? So when we were hit with COVID, our immediate reaction, and I think we were possibly the second council in the country to respond in this way, was to put in place a pandemic response and recovery plan. And the key bit there was about trying to soften or mitigate the impacts of the virus and the consequent economic slowdown on our business community and on people who had lost jobs or had their hours reduced. And so the immediate things were, you can see there, rates relief. So the rates bill which you would have had in the mail in the last few days, probably, if you were significantly adversely affected by COVID economically, then we are providing for that rates bill to be able to be deferred until the end of the year, till December, without the usual 10% rates penalty. We also put in place freezes or rebates on quite a number of different council charges. So you know, for example, if you had a gym membership or a swimming membership, you didn't have to pay for those or the value was transferred to a later date. Likewise, if we were your landlord, or if you, for example, had a lecker licence or a pavement licence, all of those things, we weren't going to charge you while you weren't able to use them. So that was the first immediate part of our pandemic response. And obviously, we also did a lot in the way of providing more services, particularly welfare services for those who are the least fortunate in our society. Can we move on to the next one, please, Olivia? So that was our immediate response, was the pandemic response. We're also looking very much at recovery, and part of that recovery is trying to draw people back into the central city in particular, to try and get businesses operating, to try and get arts and events operating, when we're able to do that, particularly when we get to level one. The second part is today, which is about the draft annual plan. And really what we're trying to do there is to balance the rates impact. So we've got to pay for what it is, the services that we provide. We want to make sure that we don't overcharge people because we know that this is a time when people can least afford to pay for those rates. But we also don't want to go to the extent of cutting services because obviously that inputs more people out of work and also adversely affects the economy itself. So we think we've got the balance about right, but we are certainly looking forward to your feedback. Can we go to the next one, please? So as I said at the top there, we are borrowing to offset the lost revenue. So we expect that to be up to about the $70 million mark. So what you see there is $38 million in lost revenue in 2020, 2021. Plus, we have cancelled a number of fee increases that we proposed, particularly in the building consent area and the parking area. So instead of adding those charges, what we're doing is we're taking them essentially on the debt line. And then there was the $20 million on top of that from the 2019-20 year, so all up close to $70 million. If we were to rate you for that now, it would be roughly another 12% on rates. And clearly, that is not acceptable probably at any time, but certainly not now. This is the rainy day, so we have chosen to borrow for that and to spread that cost over a number of years. Next one, please, Olivia. While we're doing this, we also need to make sure that we're continuing to invest in the future of the city and transforming the future of the city. So we want to keep on investing in those things to improve sustainability, resilience, and the overall livability of the city. We don't just want to stand still over the next few years while we come out of the COVID situation. So what are some of the key projects? Well, I've already mentioned some of them in terms of the things which weren't funded in our long-term plan, so it's Let's Get Wellington Moving. We're trying to accelerate that. We've put a number of things in the Let's Get Wellington Moving, walking, cycling, public transport area up for the shovel-ready list for government, Tanaka Civic Precinct and the library, and we'll be making some announcements on that later on this week. The central city libraries, the pop-up ones, which, two of which are in operation and one is going to be opening in a couple of months' time. And then investing in the Three Waters network. So we are increasing our level of investment in Three Waters. And I know that's particularly something which the people in the Farah Bay community will be particularly concerned about. So we want to put more money into inspections, trying to find problems in the system and monitor the condition of the asset and so we can fix things more accurately and quicker. Can we have the next one, please, Olivia? And so also in the budget, we have, I've already mentioned the Three Waters, so we're putting in an extra $2.9 million into the Three Waters this year, at least that is in the budget. The convention and exhibition centre, which construction began at the end of last year, so about September last year, and that construction's continuing. It's worth about 800 jobs at the moment in terms of the construction project. The St James Theatre, which is undergoing a significant strengthening and refurbishment job. And then Tanaka Civic Precinct, including the central library. So we'll be making some announcements about that at the end of this week. And a paper will go to council next week. The town hall you see there, so workers back underway on the town hall strengthening project. And that's something which will carry on for the next three years. And then Let's Get Wellington Moving, I've already mentioned. Next one, please, Olivia. And there's also a number of community projects. The first two of these are resilience projects. So those of you who've been up the Ni'au Gorge in the last two or three years will have seen the massive slip that risked partway up the gorge. We've been doing a lot of investigatory work and stabilisation work there. And this year, we will be doing the actual construction to try and make sure that we keep that embankment safe and stop it slipping. There's also resilience work in a retaining wall at Waisstown. In the annual plan debate on the 30th of April, there were some additions made to the budget. The first one of those there is $150,000 for home energy audits. And that fits very, very closely with our desire to become a more carbon-neutral city. So we are working on an action plan for Atukura, which is our first-to-zero strategy, and that will come out fairly soon. And this is in addition to that, $150,000 to work with homeowners to try and make sure that they are as energy efficient and as warm and dry as possible. And then also, we're putting in place $200,000 for weed and pest control. And that is to continue the environmental restoration journey that we've been on for the last almost 30 years. And obviously, we are very much involved in predator-free, but we also need to be looking at the weed-free situation as well. And then there are a number of community facilities, R O Valley, Newtown, and Strathmore Community Centres. And then Community Developments, Newlands Park, and the Alex Moore Sporting Hub. Next one, please. There are two rates options. It's always good to have options, give you some choices in the draft annual plan. 5.1% is our recommendation, 2.3% is the other option. And I'll just quickly go through the difference between the two of those. Neither of them change the levels of service. The big difference between the two of them is that if we go for 5.1%, we are fully funding the depreciation of our water's assets. If we go for the 2.3%, we're not fully funding that. So the difference essentially is what we do with our infrastructure assets is we revalue them every three years. And the reason for that is simply that it costs more to fix pipes now than it did 10 years ago, than it did 20 years ago, than it did 30 years ago. And it will probably cost more in the future as well. So we need to, if we're going to fund those properly, we need to depreciate them. So first of all, we need to fully revalue them, and then we need to depreciate that value. So we're collecting the right amount of money to be able to invest in the Three Waters assets. So if we don't go for the 5.1%, effectively we're borrowing to fund the, to fund essentially the renewal of those Three Waters assets. I think we jump over this one and then go to the other one. Thanks, Olivia. So if we go for the 2.3%, which is always a much more attractive option, effectively that means the difference between the two, so it's a 2.8% plus a little bit, would then go on to next year's rates. And you will see in the document, when you read it, that if we do go for the lower number, then next year's rates increase becomes that much higher. So basically, you either decide to pay it now or you decide to pay it later. Obviously, there are a lot of things that might change between now and then, but it will clearly have an impact. Next one, please, Olivia. Then we get to a quick poll on whether you understand the trade-offs between the two options and whether I've explained it clearly or not.
Fantastic. Let's launch that poll, Olivia. And this poll is designed to help us decide which of the many questions that have been streaming in, we will pick up and answer right at this moment.
And if you reply to the polls quite quickly, because otherwise they will catch shut off fairly quickly too. It's the only we've already got.
So just fill in the one that makes the most sense to you. And are those answers coming in, Olivia?
Yep, answers are coming. And now we've had more than half of our audience tonight answer that poll. So I'm going to close that and share the results.
Absolutely. Okay, pretty good, Andy. You did not too bad at all.
Well, I think people are very understanding and very knowledgeable then.
Very good, very good.
That's why I was watching the clock. I think I was running out of time, so.
So based on those answers, Diane, you've got some questions for Andy. And I've seen a stream of questions come in, so let's choose some.
Okay, great. Can you hear me okay, Esther?
Yes, we can.
Terrific. Okay. So yes, there's been a lot of questions coming through. So we will do our best to answer them here, but we will definitely wrap them all up at the end of the evening as well. So there's been lots of themed ones. Just now, there's been a bit of a rush of questions around the temporary Brooklyn cycleway, which we'll just park and get to in a little bit. And then there were lots of questions also about rates and repaying and so forth. So this one is from Marion, and she asked this question as she registered. And the question is, is a 5.1% rates increase enough? We have a lot of deferred maintenance to do. Should we be paying more?
Look, Marion, it's a good question. And you know, we always like to try and keep the rates down as much as we can. But the reality is, we are faced with a very significant number of very large investments that we need to make. And I guess our biggest challenge is we've got to make sure that the money we spend, we spend well, that every dollar does count. So what we've done this year is we started out originally with 9.2% was our proposal. And even that was clawed back from about 16. So we're taking on a fair amount of risk on the council. And we're also trying to make some savings within the council, and we'll keep on doing that. But we started off with 9.2 and we said that that's just too high in the COVID environment. We know that, as I said, people, businesses are going to be really struggling with this. So we've trimmed it back to 5.1. And what we're effectively doing is we're pushing some of those costs on to next year. So next year will be significantly higher, unfortunately, unless we do something very dramatic. And I suspect that would be something that if we were to do that, the community wouldn't like. So we do, you know, what we do, we have to pay for. And that's the balancing act that the community needs to give us feedback on.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Next question, Diane?
Yep. This is sort of the other side of that coin. So this is a question from Matt. It's also a question that Doug has sent in live just now. In the midst of the greatest economic crisis since the Great Depression, how do you think we will pay for a 5.1% rates rise? And just before you answer that, Rahul has also added to that just now. Given this is a 1 in 100 year situation, why don't we spread the payback over 40 years?
Well, effectively, that's what we are doing. We're spreading the payback over a number of years. Now, you might want to give us feedback as to how long that is. But of course, if we spread it, if we spread our groceries effectively over a very long period of time, then what we're saying to the rate payers of 10, 20, 30 years' time is you pay for us now. So we've probably got to balance that up and say that if we want our groceries to be paid for by someone else, maybe we should be thinking about how many groceries we want to buy. So that's part of it. We have pushed quite a number of costs on over the next 10 years. So for example, the issues around the Mount Albert sludge, they've been spread over 10 years. The debt funding of the COVID, that $70 million I was talking about, that will also be spread over 10 years. So we are doing that. And we've also pushed a number of things like Let's Get Wellington Moving, the planning for Civic Square, etc. We're pushing those on to next year's budget as well. So we're very conscious of that. The other bit which is really important is to remember that we're allowing for the potential of rates deferral. And if you defer the rates, you're not just deferring 5%, you're deferring 100% of the rates. So that's probably the key thing. And so that's not only in the current quarter that we're in, that is the end of 2019-20, but also the first two quarters of next, the 2020-21 year. So we are trying to make sure that we mitigate those effects as much as we possibly can. But again, we want people's feedback on these things.
Quite a lot to juggle. Diane, shall we take one more question here about the annual plan?
Okay, question from Tom. Where does addressing the historic neglect of our water infrastructure sit in the annual plan? And what's happening with the central library?
Okay, good questions, Tom. So two things. First of all, we are, I've got a Meral Task Force looking at water at the moment, or the Three Waters. And what we're aiming to do is to look at the condition of the asset, to look at the level of investment that's been made, to see whether that investment is enough or not. But look, I think we probably all suspect that we need to spend more on it. And I think the issue is not necessarily that we, because we've been fully depreciating that asset over about 30 years. The question is, have we put all that money into the Three Waters? But even more so, what was happening for the 70 years before that? Because water assets are supposed to last 100 years. So we might be picking up the deferred maintenance issues for the 1940s, 1950s, 1960s. So we've put extra money into the budget this year to do that condition assessment, to have roving crews to check out where there are particular problems. So we are investing in these. And whether we need to invest more on that, we will find out as a result of the of the Meral Task Force. And that will flow through into the long-term plan when we do a comprehensive asset management plan for next year. With respect to the library, well, the good news is that finally, we're going to have a paper which will go to council next week. And so you'll see some publicity around that at the end of this week. And at least that's a step forward, which will start people being able to see where we're going or where we could go with the library. It'll be a big decision for the city. And so again, we will be coming and talking to you all about that.
Thank you, Andy. And I can see over here a stream of questions continuing to come in live. Diane and her team will be working through those and answering them and posting them for you. And I think, Amy, you've been able to take a few as well. Thank you, Andy. So now I'm going to invite Jenny Conde in.
I'll black out for the moment with it.
And Jenny, if you would like to come in and welcome. And Olivia, if you could bring on the screen for the parking presentation. Thank you, Jenny.
Thanks, Esther. Hi, everyone. We've got the parking policy out for a review at the moment for consultation. And this has been something the staff have been working on for several years. So it's really exciting to have it out in the public conversation right now. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this parking policy is really to provide a framework that will give us some guidance for how we make decisions about parking in the coming years. So there's nothing in this parking policy that would actually make changes on our streets as soon as it comes into place. It's really a policy framework about how we're going to prioritise the on-street space that we have, whether that should be prioritised for cycleways and bus lanes, what kind of parking and what places. Those are the big framework decisions that we're trying to set up in this policy. And so hopefully, once we've got those principles in place, once we're making a decision about a particular street or area in the future, we can come back to these touchstone principles that we've all agreed on and say, okay, these are the principles that we're following. And we can take that out for consultation with the community. So it's going to provide a lot more transparency in how we're making decisions. And the key issue here is we're trying to support the shift from private cars into other kinds of transport modes like cycling, scooters, and public transport. The reality is that those modes often, obviously, need to take up space on our streets as well. So we have to find ways to make space for these new changes. And so this is really a conversation about how we prioritise that space for different kinds of transport. The review looks at council on and off-street parking, but we add council facilities like recreation centres. like recreation centres, but it doesn't look at private parking buildings like Wilson's Parking and so on. And we don't have a lot of off-street parking in council anymore. So primarily what we're looking at is the street space that we're using for on-street parking at the moment. And the reality is, as we go forward with things like Let's Get Wellington Moving, we are going to have less of that space available for parking. So we have to think really carefully about how we're going to prioritise that. Next slide, please. So the policy sets out some clear objectives and principles about what we're trying to achieve in this policy. As I said, we, we know that we're not going to have more space for on-street parking than we've had in the past. The geography of our streets means that we're not going to be able to widen them and, and create a lot more space. So we, we are going to have as much space as we have now or less as we go forward and, and implement things like Let's Get Wellington Moving. So we need to be clear about how we're going to prioritise that space, what our objectives are for parking and, and the principles we have there. We set out in, in the policy a parking space hierarchy that says, looking at different parts of the city, what are the most important priorities for this part of the city? In some places, we've identified things like cycleways and bus lanes. And in other places, there'll be loading zones, taxi parking. In some places, it'll be residential parking. So we've, we've created a priority set. Sorry, I've just been interrupted by bedtime. And so when we look at the parking space hierarchy across the city, we're looking at what are the different priorities that we have. And then we've also in the policy, we've got some, some ideas around area-based planning, pricing and parking management hierarchy, which I'm going to talk to you on the next slide. So I'll just flick on to the next slide, please. All right. So one of the things we're looking at in this parking policy is taking an area-based approach to parking management. In the past, often when we've made changes to parking, we've had problems with parking, we look at a specific street and it's identify that there's some problems here and we try to fix them on that street. And then when we make changes, actually the, the spillover effects affect all the streets around it. And then we have to go to that street and the next street next to that and fix the problems there. So the idea here is that we'll take a look at the whole area together and come up with an approach that will work for the whole area. It's also a chance for us to be really holistic and involve other people other than just transport planners in this, these decisions. So we can have a conversation in a community, bring in Greater Wellington Regional Council, local communities. If we're in somewhere like Newtown, we could bring in the hospital. We can bring in those, those people to have a conversation about what the community is trying to achieve with parking and on-street space. Next slide, please. The other thing that we're looking at is, is bringing in something called demand-based pricing. So again, this policy is a framework. It wouldn't actually result in any immediate changes to pricing about, in our parking in our city. But it would allow for us to move towards what's called demand-based pricing, which is where the demand for parking is the highest, we would increase the price. And where demand is lower, then the price would be lower. And it can be much more responsive to changes in demand. And this is a way of, of helping us to manage the, the amount of parking that we have in the city. So for example, in Courtney Place, we know that there's parking is in really high demand in the evenings, but not so much during the day. Whereas Lampington Key area, it's really in high demand during the day and less at night. So demand-based pricing would let us set different prices for different parts of the city at different times of the day, depending on how, how the demand is. And this is something that's been operating in Auckland for a while and a number of overseas cities. And it's been really, really successful. So we're keen to hear about your views on this. Next slide, please. And the management hierarchy approach really sets out the tools that the council's going to use if we have an issue where we don't have enough parking supply in a, in a space and demand is exceeding supply. And it just sets out which tools are we going to use first? So the first thing we would look at is increasing any monitoring and enforcement of existing parking restrictions in the area. And then if that's not enough to, to deal with the problem, then we would look at bringing in tighter time restrictions. So perhaps if there's somewhere that we've got a lot of commuter parking happening, we might say, okay, maybe we need P120 parking in this area. After that, we might look at bringing in other kinds of designations. So we could bring in things like loading zones or parking for residential parking. And then if none of those, if we've brought those things in and we still have a problem with parking demand, then we can introduce parking charges or increase the charges that are already in that area to try and manage the problem. And as a last resort, if, if we can't manage to address the, the extra demand with all of those tools, then we would look at trying to source alternative, alternatives or increasing supply. And this is sort of part of the area-based approach, is that we could work with community groups and try and find alternatives for the area. So looking at alternative transport options. And we could also then look at increasing supply if there's a particular reason why we, why we do need some parking in that, in that area. We could look at, at working with private suppliers to increase the off-street parking supply in that space. Next slide, please. Time for Partai. So as I said, the main issue with the parking policy is really about trying to get a sense of what your priorities are for the on-street space that we only have a limited amount of.
Great. And we've had a range of questions, Diane, on parking. Do you want to field a couple for Jenny now?
Yes, I do. I'm going to start with one from Vicky. This was, Vicky asked this question when she registered rather than a live on just now, but we've got plenty of those too. Vicky's question is Wellington is lacking in car parks and it is impacting the retailers' arts, et cetera. How is the council looking to improve parking in the city?
Sure, thanks, Vicky. And as I said, we're never going to have more on-street parking than we have right now. We can't, I wish I could, but I can't magically make more street parking appear. So anything, any increase in supply is going to have to be looking at off-street parking. And most of the off-street parking in our city is privately owned. So it's really about private companies making those decisions about where they're going to provide parking and what they're going to charge. But council does always work with them to try and make sure that we have the right mix of parking in the city.
Let's take another one, Diane.
Yes. Sorry, I've just.
They keep coming in.
Here I am, okay. This is from Karen. Why is parking prioritised over safe transport such as cycling when so many people want to cycle?
Thanks, Karen. And that's really at the heart of what this parking policy review is all about, is that we have limited street space and we have to decide what we're going to put on it. We can't have a cycleway and a parking space in the same physical space on the road. So we have to choose. So it's really about hearing from the community about what your priorities are and what you think we should be using that really valuable on-street space for, whether it should be for parking or whether it should be for cycleways or bus lanes, residents' parking, whatever it is that you think is the most important. That's what we want to hear about.
Thank you, Jenny. So the questions are continuing to come in. Diane, the team will also be answering those. And at the end of this webinar, we will also be telling you about how you can make submissions through a variety of channels. Thank you very much, Jenny. So I'd like to invite the whole panel back now. And let's field some of those all-important local questions. We've got everybody back in.
Everyone's in?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Are we ready to go?
Yes.
This is a question from Linda. councillor Fitzsimmons, I'm sending this your way. Linda lives in Dover Street and says that she said sewage repairs in front of her house for five months, not loving the putrid smell. And it's been dreadful during lockdown. And she would just like to have a response on that, please.
Yeah, hi, Linda. And yeah, thank you for your patience and tolerance in dealing with those quite revolting smells. I've been down there and with my kids playing at Wakefield Park and you can smell it there. And I've also had it raised by a number of residents in the area. And it has been a major problem. People have talked about their children not wanting to go out and play, really concerned about it. So look, it has been raised with Wellington Water. And what they tell me is that they have things called demisters installed at both ends of the tunnel. And that's the kind of most internationally reliable thing to try and deal with the odour. But it doesn't deal with it every day. And depending on the wind, it still can be quite bad. But there is a person called Suzanne Pollard at Brian Perry Civil Engineering, who says that if you want to email her, you can get up-to-date time, information about the likely smell and the progress with the, with the work. And her email is susanp@fcc.co.nz. And that will be put in the answers as well. So you can get really detailed information about when the tunnel's likely to be fixed and also if you're having issues with the demisters. But hopefully it's a bit better because they are now operating 24 hours a day and seven days a week, thanks to feedback from people like you.
Amy, let's get that email address into the answers if you didn't catch it or otherwise if it doesn't come up, Flur, if you could, if you could pop that in for people. That's, that's really great. Thank you, thank you, yeah. Next question, Diane.
Okay, this is from Karen. And this is a question from lots of people tonight through the registrations and through the live questions as well. And it's about cycleways. When is the cycleway from Island Bay into town going to be finished? My son cycles to school and it's not safe. Councillor Foon for you.
You're on, great.
Okay, there. You all went missing for a little bit, but we're back now. Kia ora, Karen. I just, I agree that there's a lot more potential to enable more people to cycle on the cycleway if it's safer. But I must say, my family were all down there enjoying it over lockdown. And it felt, still felt safer for them to cycle on it than to not. So it's still working reasonably well. The Island Bay Parade upgrade is part of the Newtown Connections Link and part of the Let's Get Wellington Moving Programme. And so it has been, definitely been part of these discussions. But I agree, the root needs to be remedied as soon as possible. And so it has been put forward as one of the shovel-ready projects. And I'm not sure when they're going to be announced. Andy, I don't know if you can speak to that at all?
We, we hope we'll get some answers in the next week-ish, but it might not be all, all happening at once. So we'll, we'll see. So it's in the hands of the ministers at the moment.
Great. But happy for you to keep in touch with us, Karen, because we're also asking regularly. Thank you.
Very good. Next question, Diane.
Okay, this one's from Vicky. Neither of our councillors keep us up to date with what is happening in our area. How can we set up a system to ensure the communication happens?
So I just, I guess I want to start by saying thank you for the question. And Laurie and I have talked about this issue a lot. And we're really both genuinely interested in how we can do better. And I thought it would be quite helpful maybe to talk about what we currently do. And that might spark off some ideas about how we could do it better or what other information we could get out to the community. So both Laurie and I are very active in the local community. We attend all of the residents' associations throughout the ward. And I've personally found them very enriching and useful meetings to attend because you come away from them with a sense of what the community is concerned about. But also with small things that need fixing, like the lights flickering in the street or the lack of a mobility park at Brooklyn Shops or the need for better pedestrian crossings at local schools, all of which are issues that I've raised as a result of attending residents' association meetings and hearing from residents about those concerns. What I always say to people is, look, if you email me or ring me, I'll always get back to you. I'll always raise the issue that you want me to raise, but I can't promise you the outcome that you want. But I'll always try and get you answers and make sure that, you know, at least you, you get a response and you feel heard and listened to. And I guess the other thing I would say is that both Laurie and I are very active on social media. We know that the residents' associations have got onto the mailing list for the council media releases and newsletters. I've got, had some really good feedback from people about that and that, that people didn't actually understand the full extent of what council was doing. And obviously, only some of those media releases I get through to the newspaper. So it's been very valuable, I know, for people to, to get them. But look, I, I, I want people to feel like we communicate effectively and well with them. So please give us any more feedback about that. Feel free to email me, contact me on Twitter, Facebook, and Laurie's the same. We try to be really conscientious when it comes to engaging with the community. And yeah, if there's ways that we can do it, better bring it on and let us know.
Thank you, Flur, and thumbs up from Laurie too on that. But next question, Diane, because they're streaming in.
Yeah, they are. So this one is about climate change and there's been a lot of questions to come through. This is a real theme, but I'm going to pick one from Tom. Vivian, you also put a question in around this topic. Tom's question is, given the climate crisis, explain Wellington City Council's strategy around building seawalls. And Vivian added to that, how are we going to face climate change and sea level rise in particular? Wellington has so many vulnerable areas to sea level rise. And councillor Foon, I think, I wonder if you could help with that one?
So first part to that question, obviously, the seawalls and what we're doing around that is a big area of concern and needs a lot of community involvement. So we are currently looking at seawalls to protect public assets like roads. And climate change raises additional questions. Actually, I'm just going to go back. Also, our natural environmental protection is a really big part of how we mitigate sea level rise. So, so this is, all of this raises additional questions around this policy. The process by which we work out resourcing priority areas for future project, protection will be part of the long-term plan process engagement on that happens next year. So you can be part of that, helping us prioritise where we spend our money. And the process of sea level rise and how we're dealing with that, it, it's big. There's no doubt about it. And perhaps it's time that as communities, we do start to talk about it together and how we want to manage it. Because we as council also don't have the answers. But as a community, I think we've all seen that we can work much better together. So please help us to engage with you on that topic. Thank you.
And Andy, do you have anything you want to add to that?
A few things. I mean, first is that we, we approved Tiata Kura, which is our first-to-zero climate change policy last year. And then we're waiting for the, for the action plan for that. So there'll be a whole series of different things that we plan to do. But we're not sitting, doing nothing in the meantime. So key areas are focused. I mean, transport is a significant emitter in, in Wellington. And we already have the highest level of walking, cycling and public transport in the country by, by some margin. That's continually grown over the last 30-odd years. And we're looking to grow that further. So in our shovel-ready projects, and this to the government, we said that we want to accelerate that, to do this, do this faster. So that's one part. Second part is spatial planning is really, really important too. So how we design our city. And if we are a more compact city, which again, has been a 30-year strategy of the council, if we are more compact, we are more walkable. People may have, you know, easier access to, to public transport, to shops, to, to employment, to entertainment, to recreation. So those are key areas. So we're doing those regardless of the climate change policy, but they absolutely support the climate change policy. And then as I said, in this, in this annual plan, we've got things like increasing the investment in, in trying to make sure that people have warm, dry and therefore energy-efficient homes as well. So there's a heap of things that we're doing there. We could talk about, you know, the way we manage landfills and waste. We could talk about the way we're trying to restore the natural environment and try and essentially build carbon sinks. So there's, there's a lot of stuff that we are doing to try and reduce our cities and our, and our impact on the, on, on the environment and on, on carbon emissions.
But let's pick up on that, Diane, and segue into, we had some questions about landfills.
We did. We've got, I'm going to go to that question now. And I'm just going to let people know that there's been lots and lots of questions also about the temporary cycle lane in Brooklyn Hill, so, or Brooklyn Road. So I'm going to, I'll come back to that in a Jiff. And on landfill, this was a registration question from Holden. And we've since had a question from Paul and actually several others around this particular issue. And Holden's question is, what's our backup plan if we don't get an extension to consent for the landfill? Councillor Foon, is that one for you?
Yeah, oh yeah, this is my favourite topic. But essentially, if we don't get, get an extension to the landfill by resource consent, we would need to go to either another landfill in the region with all of our sludge and all of the waste that we all make in our homes daily and dump it somewhere else. And, or we'd need to find an alternative technology. But what I think our rallying cry needs to be is that we need to move to a zero way, towards zero waste rapidly by driving a circular economy where we design waste out and we reuse our resources. And one of the most obvious examples we have of that is that Wellington throws out kitchen and green waste that take up over 25% of the space in the landfill. And this is actually a valuable resource that we can be using to make compost and grow food. And in this annual plan, we've also pushed the business case forward to transition the landfill to a resource recovery park. So please, feedback, creating more landfill is not the way forward, people. We need to change our habits drastically now. We need to change our habits drastically now. Thank you.
The time has definitely come for that. So, uh, let's go back to your JIF then Diane, where would you want to go from there?
Um, this is, uh, so should, should we do the Brooklyn Road cycleway?
Yes, I see a lot of questions coming in about that.
Yeah, lots of questions on that. So, um, I'm picking one from Catherine. Uh, what alternatives has the council considered regarding the temporary cycle lane up Brooklyn Road? And, uh, it was either you Catherine or somebody else suggested a wider space for walking might be a better option. I'm not sure, um, who, is someone happy to talk to that?
Thanks FLIR.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, there was consideration of a number of projects and this, it's really important to remember that this is an NZTA fund which is set up for, uh, a post-COVID temporary, uh, options to encourage active transport and, and different transport modes. And I, I know that there is frustration out there in the community about, uh, a lack of consultation on this. And I guess I just want to first of all acknowledge that. Uh, second of all, encourage people to engage with the traffic resolutions because there is a genuine opportunity to do that. And those traffic resolutions have been circulated, but they're also available on the council website. And the thing that I would say about engaging with traffic resolutions that is different from some consultations is that for every comment that comes back from the community, you get a response. So the council officers who work on them, look at the comment and respond to it. So there's a genuine kind of transparency about the concerns that people raise and what the response is. And look, at the moment, I think a, um, up, uphill cycleway temporarily on Brooklyn Hill is a good idea. I think it's worth a try. I want to encourage, uh, more people to be able to cycle safely, but I appreciate there's a range of views in the community and I want to hear all of the views. So, you know, please don't be put off, please do participate in that consultation. Um, and I absolutely commit to you that it's genuine.
Thank you, thank you FLIR. Uh, Diane, should we take some questions on, and for, uh, uh, c- community facilities? There was a raft of questions around that.
There was. Um, so we had a question, uh, from Steve. Um, it was about Newtown facility actually. So Steve asked, when will the Newtown Community and Cultural Centre upgrade get going? It seems like there has been lots of consultation, but not much action.
Yeah, and I think that's a really fair criticism Steve and hello to the Newtown Residents' Association who I know have deferred your meeting and instead come on to this, uh, webinar. And I do want to acknowledge that the Residents' Association and the Newtown Community and Cultural Centre who have been actively involved in partnering in quite a different way with the council on the facilities upgrade in Newtown. And it has been delayed and delayed and delayed. When I first came on to council in 2017, it was about to happen. Um, but now it is again about to happen, although I do have a lot more faith, um, that it is genuinely about to happen. And I know that, um, there's been a huge amount of work from that group. There's a lot of information on the website, thenutowncommunity.org.nz, Our Town Newtown, it's got a link there. Um, you can look at some detailed plans and look, I understand that, uh, resource consent is about to be sought. So yes, there's been a lot of delays, those delays have been really disappointing, but there has been an amazing, uh, commitment from the Newtown Community and, into the process and I think, you know, we will get there in the end.
Thank you FLIR. Uh, Diane, we have time for a couple more questions, where would you like to go?
Okay, so we've got a bit of a transporty one here and it's, um, from Mark. Um, what plans are there to provide real, safe, comfortable alternatives to car travel for those who can make the switch? Who would you like, who would like to take that one?
Can I take that one?
Aye.
I thi- I think councillor Conde and I could do it together, but, um, I think, look, um, Let's Get Welly Moving, one of the main objectives is to move more people in fewer cars. And so part of that is getting really good active transport options available. And as part of that, Wellington City Council has partnered with NZTA and the central government to build a, um, a cycleway network by 2028. The, uh, southern or the Newtown Connections work is part of this. But I do know that coming up really shortly, our team are working really hard because there are so many people and the growth of cycling from the southern route and eastern and southern is so strong that we're looking at, um, bringing a proposal for a cycle route along Adelaide Road, Kenton Cambridge Terrace, and it should be on the council table by June. I'm fingers crossed, I'm always a bit o- more optimistic. But ultimately, uh, what we've tried to present around the innovating streets is part of helping this, even though they're temporary. But also what councillor Conde's been talking about tonight, the way we are using our streets need to be reviewed. So a part of that, last week, we were listening to submissions on the safest speeds, reducing our speed is another really good way to help different modes of transport beyond the roads. And also, as councillor Conde said, the way we're storing our cars on the street is not enabling space for other forms of transport. So if you would like to help that move faster, please contribute to these, um, policies, uh, give your submissions in there, it really helps us understand what the priority is. Kia ora.
Very good, and I see some support for that coming in, uh, too, yeah Laurie. So, uh, let's wrap up with a final couple of questions, if I may lead this. Um, Diane, and I direct this one to, um, our mayor Andy. Um, how is COVID-19, Sam asks, how is COVID-19 affecting, uh, council's planning and priorities? Is there any one thing that stands out for you as an important opportunity for the city in this time?
I think probably most of the things that we're doing, you know, investing in infrastructure, the continual, uh, desire to change, as Laurie's just talked about, getting more people walking, cycling, using public transport, those things have been constant. Uh, question is whether we are actually able to accelerate some of those, I mean, if government helps us, uh, we can accelerate some of those and I think this council's really keen to do that as well. Uh, if I was to say pick an area or a couple of areas that I think we might see some change and some, some, uh, some real change in the emphasis, I mean, one of them is the central city in particular is going to struggle a little bit. Um, we've got the best central city in the country, uh, in my view, I think most people think it's been, it's the best central city in the country, but the effect of COVID on some of those businesses, particularly in the retail, uh, the arts events area, uh, hospitality area, could be really significant. And so we've got to do things as a community, as a, as a, a team of two hundred thousand plus, plus the regional team, so it's a five hundred thousand people to support those businesses now. Uh, so that means coming into town safely, um, and trying to make sure that those businesses stay afloat and therefore they keep the jobs going. So that's probably the big change that we, we have from before, because before we didn't have to worry so much about that, we could just keep on continuing to build it, keep on working on what the strengths are of Wellington and try and... But now we've got a, we've got an extra real, um, requirement to do that because we don't want to have a whole lot of vacancies in our central city because that, that really would damage the, the vibe of the central city and, and we don't want that negative cycle, we want a positive cycle. Uh, and so continuing to invest in, I think, and the other thing is, is, and you go back to the, you go back and look at what government did in the nineteen thirties when we had a depression, is they invested in infrastructure. And I think us investing in infrastructure, the government's clearly signaled that it wants to invest in infrastructure now, which is why we've got the shovel-ready projects. And then we need to be doing the same kind of thing to be supporting that, um, because that keeps people working and you get assets that then are valuable over a long period of time. So that's, that's a key change. I think the other one that I'm really excited about too was, was the budget announcement. I was, um, I was being talking with the Department of Conservation over the last few, um, few weeks, uh, to the Director General, is about this idea of having a, a fund, a Jobs For Nature initiative. And we will see some people who will lose work, but if we can find work for them in creating a better natural environment, then that's a really exciting thing. And we've been on an incredible journey over the last thirty years in Wellington and restoring our natural environment. And that's obviously what we'd like to do and to build on that and to take the next step with that. And I think if there are people who need work, uh, and the government is willing to support that work, then we have a marriage of two really great outcomes together. So that's, that's a change, a change through COVID.
Thank you. Uh, Laurie, you had a com- comment, so let's take that as a, as a final, uh, comment. And also if you could perhaps talk about, uh, why people should bother putting it in a submission?
Um, I'll, I'll just back Andy up on this statement and maybe some FLIR or councillor Conde can take on the why you should put in the statement, but, um, council is probably one of the biggest spenders in the city. And so as part of this annual plan, we've also, um, councillor Fitzsimons moved a procurement, um, amendment around council, not only reviewing its, uh, procurement policy, like the way we're spending money, but to actually prioritise local businesses so that we could join in our, um, you know, love local campaign as well. And as part of that, we want to look at how we're, we're supporting social, social impact and environmental impact as part of this expenditure. So this is another way that council can support local businesses to do better over this time.
Thank you Laurie. And, uh, why should people bother putting in a submission? Who would like to take that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the thing about local government is, it's actually quite easy to have some influence. So if you see something happening in your community and you're not happy with it, or you think it could be done better, or you're concerned about how your city's run, or these particular things you really like about it, um, I've seen people, all of you residents, be able to make some quite significant change. So, um, if you care about your city, we want to hear from you.
Uh, we also had a really great question, uh, earlier this morning from, um, Northern Ward about what is the process for a submission? Who gets to see them? How does it go through the channels? How do I know that my submission is being, uh, heard? Uh, and Diane and her team will be asking that, answering that really specifically so you can see the, the process. Um, questions continue to, um, come in, so, uh, they will be, um, Diane and her team will be, uh, working on those, but, um, as we close, um, Olivia, could you bring up the slide deck so that we can show people the different ways that they can, um, uh, submit?
So, um, there are four key ways, there is the website, uh, Let's Talk Wellington, you can go there, uh, social media, Facebook. Um, you can also email submissions on either the annual plan or the parking policy to these two websites and there is a dedicated consultation helpline, uh, to help you with that process as well. So a variety of ways. So let's hear from you again, uh, if you could launch the next poll Olivia. So we're interested to hear, uh, which of the, um, uh, which of these you would be interested in providing feedback on? Yes, you'd like to feedback on the annual plan, yes on the parking policy. Let us know whether you're not sure or whether you definitely won't be providing feedback, just whichever you think, uh, uh, relates to you right now. So are those coming in, are those responses coming in, Olivia?
Yes, they're all coming in and I'll just give it one more second, uh, before I close the poll. Um, so I'm just going to close that right now. And here are the results.
Oh fantastic, oh fantastic. You'll be very pleased about that. Uh, and if in the survey that gets launched after this, I see that, uh, about twenty percent of you are not sure or won't be providing feedback, uh, in the survey that gets launched immedi- if you could close out of that now Olivia. Um, that gets, uh, launched immediately after this, if you have any, uh, feedback or input about, uh, what would help you, uh, submit, we'd like to hear about that too. So we've come to the end of, uh, our session tonight, the, uh, second of five that are happening across the wards. Uh, thank you very much to the panel who's joined us, uh, on another, uh, evening of work. Uh, thank you very much to the, um, team that stands behind you, um, engagement to annual plan and communications teams to make all of this happen. Uh, and in particular to you, the audience, who have, um, stayed with us. Uh, and that's both you who are here with us now, uh, but also who will be viewing this webinar in the coming weeks. Thank you for that. And Andy, if I could ask you to close with a karakia?
Look, can I just say again, uh, as Esther did, thank you everyone for your participation tonight. Um, it's fantastic that you all turned out virtually too, um, and you've asked obviously so many questions and obviously we will get the answers to all of those questions back to you so you can be able to see them all. Uh, and, um, thanks to, to all the team that helped put this together. Esther, thanks for taking us through it and thanks to my council colleagues for, uh, for answering those questions so well. Right, I'll close with a karakia. Une here, une here, une here, kit uru tapunui. Kia watea, kia mama, kia naka, te tinana. Te wairua, i te ara takataku. Koya ra e rongo, fakaria aki ki ranga. Kia watea, kia watea, ai ra, kuwa watea. Kia ora.
Um, ameni, ameni. And have a good evening everyone. Mata wa.
Thank you everyone.
Kaki te, thank you.
Kaki te.